Okay, counsel?
All right, we'll get started this evening and our apologies for the technical difficulties. Welcome to City Council meeting for April 25th, 2022, and I would ask that you join us, stand for the prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, thank you for the opportunity this evening to meet counsel and with citizens of Lebanon as we discuss the issues and give us the wisdom and the grace to have conversation for the betterment of our city. We ask that you watch over our military here and around the world, their families. We also ask that you watch over our first responders. And tonight especially, we ask that you keep Lebanon City Police Department in mind and we keep them in our prayers as they're going through this most difficult time. In God's name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance, this is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And Cheryl, if you could call the roll, please.
Mrs. Hatos?
Here.
Mr. Martin? Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Wertz?
Here.
Chairman Morales?
Here. And you've all received the minutes for the last meeting on March 28th of 2022. Are there any additions, corrections, deletions? Okay, no questions. Hearing none, the minutes will stand as distributed. You also received your budget report for January 1st through March 31st of 2022. And Mayor, if you could give us a little background where we stand?
Sure. So this represents 25% of our budget year completed. Our revenues are at 23%. We're just starting to receipt our real estate tax, which is our second largest revenue source. Our expenditures are at a little more than 17%, so we are under budget in expenditures. We are at acceptable and appropriate numbers for the end of the month, March.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Any questions from counsel? All right. And any from anyone in attendance this evening? Okay. Moving on, we have one item under Communications. This is with Pennsylvania Auditor General Timothy De Four transmitting the compliance audit reports of the City of Lebanon, non-uniformed police and paid firemen's pension plans for the period of January 1st, 2018 through December 31st of 2022, or 2020, excuse me. Mayor?
Thank you. So the police and paid firemen's pension plans had clean audits. The non-uniform plan, I have to report that we had received two findings. One finding was the city's error. We had an employee promoted from part-time to full-time status, which rarely happens, and the employee was not included in the report. This resulted in the city receiving one less unit of state aid for the two years, amounting to $9,721. However, we will be reimbursed for those monies and made whole. The second finding is not the city's fault in that we contract with the state, PMRS, to provide pension benefits for our non-uniform employees. And PMRS recently went through a substantial upgrade to the plan administration software, and they implemented a new accounting system. This delayed their end-of-year reporting, which affected us and many other local municipalities in our state.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And we discussed this Thursday that we'll be made whole on any of those issues. So are there any questions from counsel? And any questions from anyone in attendance this evening?
So the $9,721 that's money is just delayed getting to the city?
Yes.
Is that basically it because of that little switch?
Yes.
Okay, just delayed, okay. Do you know approximately when we expect to receive that?
I do not.
Okay, that's on it.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to resolutions. And we have five resolutions tonight. And I'm going to start out with the first resolution recording a deep sense of loss in the death of Lieutenant William Lebo. And I would like to take this opportunity to read the resolution. And it is from Sessions 2022 through 2023, introduced by me, and I will introduce it, and it'll be dated April 25th, 2022, a resolution. Recording a deep sense of loss in the death of Lieutenant William D. Lebo of the Lebanon Police Department. Whereas, the people of the City of Lebanon were saddened to learn of the tragic death of Lieutenant William D. Lebo of the Lebanon Police Department. And whereas, Lieutenant Lebo joined the Lebanon Police Department as a patrol officer in 1982, and whereas, he was promoted to sergeant in July 2002, and in March 2005, he was promoted to lieutenant. Whereas, Lieutenant Lebo was scheduled to retire in May 2022 after serving proudly with the Lebanon Police Department for 40 years. And whereas, during his time with the City of Lebanon, Lieutenant Lebo proved to be a capable and dedicated member of the Lebanon Police Department, and we are grateful for his commitment and tireless efforts to protecting the citizens of the City of Lebanon. And whereas, Lieutenant Lebo's end of watch occurred on March 31st, 2022, when he responded to an emergency call with four other officers. Whereas, we mourn the loss of Lieutenant William D. Lebo and extend to his widow Laura and family our sincere sympathy during this time of bereavement. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the counsel of the City of Lebanon, Pennsylvania, and it is hereby resolved by the authority of the same that Section 1, we record our profound sense of loss in the death of Lieutenant William D. Lebo, and present this resolution to his family as an expression of our sincere condolences. And this is signed by myself, Karen S. Hatos, Brian Martin, Chris Miller, and Richard Wertz. And at this time, I'd like to open the floor to counsel for any comments. And Mayor, I don't know if you have anything?
Well, it's definitely a difficult time, but, and you know, our hearts go out to the family. And I think I mentioned this on Thursday, that, you know, there's always a, sometimes you hear from the loudest voices, and we heard a lot over the past few years about defunding the police and things like that. And I can assure City Council that here in Lebanon County, our community definitely supports our police, our men and women in blue. It was so evident by the number of people that came out to not only show their sympathy to our department's loss, our city's loss, Lieutenant Lebo's family's loss, but our community as a whole, and to show their support for our country and how important our men and women in blue really are. The number of people that stood along the roadside with their hands over their hearts, waving the United States of American flag with tears streaming down their face was truly humbling. And that helps. You don't forget, our men and women have to, they need to move on, and they are strong. They are strong, and we will get through this, but we just deeply appreciate the support from the community.
And Chief, I would hope that you would convey City Council's appreciation, and of course, I think we can speak for all of Lebanon when we say how deeply sorry we are for the loss and those that are also wounded. So we're praying for a speedy recovery. We will be presenting the resolution to Mrs. Lebo later this week. We'll do that in person. So I know I also had the honor of driving in the procession that took Lieutenant Lebo up to the Giant Center. And I've been through a number of military funerals in my career, unfortunately, and this was, by far stands out, the show of support along the route. You could see where businesses shut down and they came forward to the street, and you can probably hear the shake in my voice. It was humbling to see that support. People on the docks just off of 422, you could tell they're all standing on the dock to watch, and it was, I was so glad I was able to experience that. Kind of renewed my faith in humanity, and like you said, Mayor, during these troubling times, it was nice to see. So Chief, again, make sure the department knows, we're here for them. Anything we can do, don't hesitate to ask. So I would also, at this time, open the floor up for anyone in attendance, if you have any questions or any comments. Yes, please, sir. Sir, if I could just get your name and address, that's okay.
My name's Norman Tobias. One of the, I didn't know when we were going to come forward with our questions, one of my comments was going to be regarding to Lieutenant Lebo. Is there any way that the city or someone or whatever could start a scholarship fund to keep his legacy going?
I think his wife or the family may be doing just that. I think there are people involved that are working on that, sir.
Okay.
Yep, you're welcome.
I'm glad to hear that.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome.
Yeah, he will not be forgotten. Any other questions? With that, I kind of did this out of order, but I'd like to make a motion to accept Resolution Number 14. Do I have a second?
So moved.
Richard, thank you. Moved and seconded. Any other questions? Cheryl, if you could call the roll.
Mrs. Hatos?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Wertz?
Yes.
Chairman Morales?
Yes, that's 5-4, none against. Resolution Number 14, recording a deep sense of loss in the death of Lieutenant William Lebo is passed. Moving on, Resolution Number 15, authorizing the disposition of various documents of the Department of Administration. Do I have a motion for Resolution Number 15?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the disposition of documents in the Department of Administration.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Richard. It's been moved and seconded. And Mayor, if you could give us a little background on this continuing?
Sure. Again, this is in accordance with the retention and disposition schedule for records for our state. And very quickly, items like audit proposals of a couple of years, financial reports for pension funds, civil service commission records, proposals for lease of vehicles in the police department, youth government from '01, safety program from '83 and prior, and some zoning map amendments.
And any questions from counsel? And from anyone in attendance? Okay, hearing none, roll. Cheryl, if you could call the roll, please.
Mrs. Hatos?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Wertz?
Yes.
Chairman Morales?
Yes, 5-4, none against. Resolution 15 is so moved or passed. Resolution 16, authorizing the disposition of various documents in the Department of Public Works. Do I have a motion for Resolution Number 16?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to move Resolution 16.
And I'll second that. And Mayor?
Sure. Following the same procedures, items like bids for different items, like for survey services, curb and sidewalks, chain link fence at Northeast Park, petroleum products, police vehicles, snow blower bids, street sweeper bids, sale of vehicles, street bids, similar items from Public Works.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Any questions from counsel? And from anyone in attendance this evening? Hearing none, Cheryl, if you could call the roll.
Mrs. Hatos?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Wertz?
Yes.
Chairman Morales?
Yes, that's 5-4, none against. Resolution 16 passes. And Resolution 17, authorizing the proper officials of the City of Lebanon to file an application for traffic signals approved, traffic signal approval to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the installation of rapid rectangular flashing beacons, RRFBs, at the Liberty and Chapel Street crosswalks. And do I have a motion for Resolution Number 17?
I will make a motion for the adoption of Resolution Number 17.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Moved and seconded. Mayor?
So currently, we possess two mid-block crossings on Cumberland Street. Mid-block crossings are not the most ideal. Typically, you'd like to see them at street intersections, not in the middle of the block. And that's mainly for safety purposes. However, these are non-conforming. They've been in existence for a really long time. And additionally, they're kind of important to have because of the amount of foot traffic in the downtown and having a anchor building, which was formerly the Hack Building, which will now be City Hall, and a lot of retail shops. People would be, they wouldn't necessarily walk to the closest street to cross. So if we can get them into a concentrated area and have them in a protected crosswalk and with the implementation of these flashing lights, that should help improve the safety. So what happens now is, one of the current issues is that traffic doesn't necessarily always see pedestrians in the crosswalk on this two-lane highway. And with the Streetscape project that's going to be occurring, that's going to construct a small bump out on each side and also raise the pedestrian's elevation by approximately six inches. That will help with the line of sight for the motorists traveling because the pedestrian will be out closer to the lane of travel and up higher. The flashing beacons, and like I explained on Thursday, we've requested those to be Victorian posts so that they blend in with the streetlights in the downtown and not stick out and be unattractive. So hopefully with the flashing devices, that of course will greatly enhance the ability to see someone in the crosswalk. And it will work like our pedestrian buttons on our traffic signals when you have the pedestrian signal.
Okay. And any questions from counsel? And I know I've been to other communities where they have that raised, that bump, whatever you want to call it, but it really does help to see those folks as you're driving. So I will open the floor up for questions.
Mayor, what will these two devices cost the city?
Oh, boy. Do you remember the cost, Janelle? I know that we got...
Is it a budget, I mean, already?
It's in the Streetscape. So it's worked into the Streetscape, which we're using American Rescue Fund monies for that. And we're also hoping to have a contribution from the consortium.
And we received a grant as well.
Grant from the state?
And that would be in reference to Liberty Park?
For the whole Streetscape project.
Oh, okay.
You're also alluding to the fact that with Liberty Park, that'll be a needed addition and...
So Liberty Park is another project that will tie into this.
Tie into that.
Mm-hmm.
So it goes out of the Streetscape funding, so it's...
Yes.
And this is pedestrian operated, it's not always on, you push a button and it comes on?
Right.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And any other questions? Hearing none, Cheryl, if you could call the roll.
Mrs. Hatos?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Wertz?
Yes.
Chairman Morales?
Yes, that's 5-4, none against. Resolution 17 passes. And our last resolution this evening, Resolution 18, amending Resolution Number 13, Sessions 2016 through 2017, approving an agreement between the City of Lebanon and Metropolitan Edison for providing LED street lighting service in the City of Lebanon to specify the installation of four LED streetlights in the vicinity of North Liberty and Spring Streets. And do I have a motion for Resolution Number 18?
I'd like to move for the adoption of Resolution 18.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Brian, thank you. And Mayor?
Thank you. So this will be in agreement with MedEd to add three additional streetlights and then upgrade one existing streetlight. The two new ones will be, two new ones, will be between Spring and Willow, one Liberty, and then an additional new one will be between Willow and the new employee parking lot, one Liberty. And then the upgrade will be more at, it's right behind Trinity Lutheran Church, or United Methodist Church, rather, sorry, which is more at Willow and Liberty. It's an existing light that will be upgraded from sodium vapor to LED. They will be similar in wattage to what is currently in front of the municipal building here. It's 260 LED wattage. And the installation fee is $160 for each one, which will be a total of $640.
Okay. And any questions from counsel? And from anyone in attendance? Yes, Craig?
Craig Gates, I just want to express a concern. I understand how the state lights being changed LED, everybody's for it. My concern is, like along Cumberland Street, you're replacing just the bulbs and you still have the glass shade. So when you see the LEDs, it's not very glaring. But some of these new lights that are being replaced, such as in front of the municipal building, along Willow Street, west of 12th Street, out that way, those new lights are so glaring, okay? When you look, I mean, they just glare and blind you sometimes. I understand the busy streets like that, I understand that. But my concern is when you start putting them in neighborhoods, like my neighborhood and each one of your neighborhoods, are they going to replace the glass shades? Are they going to replace them with these really glaring, outlandish LED bulbs? I would hope that some consideration is given that you could shave those LEDs so they're not so intense when you get into neighborhoods.
Yeah, so a couple of things. So they have been replaced in some neighborhoods. This is something that's been actually going on, that MedEd's been upgrading the sodium vapor to LED for several years now. Every 15 years, they replace the light fixtures, and so we've requested at no charge to us. So we've requested them to upgrade any that is due. I don't know off the top of my head how many that represents at this point, but in front of the municipal building, it was a part of that plan. We specifically asked them to go to a higher light here because of safety of crossing with employees. We're asking for that on Liberty because of the same thing with the employee's safety. In the residential districts, there have been occasions where we've asked to lower the wattage because of it being a more direct, whiter light than the sodium vapor, which is more of a yellow light. We've actually decreased the wattage in some areas. If there is a problem, because I know, I think we've only gotten one or two complaints, we've gone back out and looked at it. I know Robin and I talked about, there's one residential building in this area of the different lights that we're replacing, and if it would cause a detriment to them, we could put up some type of a shield to help. They're more of a downlight. The LED, the sodium vapor is more of a broad-based light, whereas LED is more direct and down and focused. And MedEd had originally, before we even moved forward with this several years ago, gave us samples, and we actually went out to their parking lot off of Fifth Avenue to look at them. And you could really see the difference in the colored photographs on, between sodium vapor and LED. But Robin, have we gotten more than one or two complaints?
I think two.
I think two.
Well, initially, they were replacing them in the fixtures that are there.
Yeah, that's the other point.
But they're to the point now where they're completely changing the heads out. And the only place we've increased any light would be at intersections that we know are having a job or...
Are commercial.
Okay, well, I know that at T intersection, and that is my concern. The light there is fine because it's diffused by the glass. But my concern is if you put one of these LEDs that...
Yeah.
It's going to be really, so I'm just asking a consideration in neighborhood residential...
Yeah. So what we can do is, we have like a liaison between MedEd and the city, and we can reach out to her to ask her, because we noticed, like we said before, they were initially just replacing bulbs, and now they're replacing the entire head.
Right.
And we noticed with the head replacement that it does seem to be...
Too intense.
Yeah, on Stite Street in front of my house, I moved in, and they recently changed the light. Jay, you'll attest that her bedroom is on that side, and it is incredibly bright. I mean, we've all commented, and Richard, you come down Stite Street, and it is just...
We had a discussion about it.
It is really bright.
And there is such a thing as light pollution, and that's what I'm...
Right.
...concerned here is, before they start putting too many of these out, maybe some consideration should be given to residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jerry Kalanowski, I live here in the city of Port Paul, Wyoming. I'm on the planning commission, and I was talking about the same thing to Robin, this gets a few weeks ago, in fact, for a few months now. I'm in the same book, Prankzine. I understand the difference between sodium vapor and LEDs. I'm not sure about street lighting, but I know with LEDs that I've purchased for my own home, if you buy a lower Kelvin rating, the LEDs that are probably out there now are somewhere around 5,000 degrees Kelvin, which is more like daylight. The lower the number, getting down to like 32 or 2700 Kelvin, it's a much warmer light. You still have the same illumination levels, but you don't have that harshness, that glare. A year or two ago, we had someone come into the planning commission and give a presentation on street lighting and light pollution. Nothing's happened from that point on, but I think that, I asked Robin if I could get the model number and the details of these, and she said I needed to get in touch with the Metropolitan Edison Maintenance Department. I'm having a difficult time getting through to them. I believe there are street lights that have more of a shield at the side where, when you get close to or under the LED lights, you can see them, but the LED lights that are being put up here in the city, you can see them from blocks away. And I think that that shield should be down over the actual lighting lens of the light so that that light can pass out and become a glare. And I'm with you as far as second floor. I have a street light right outside my home right now. I know if that gets put in, there's no way I can stop the light from coming into the second floor. So I think these lights may not be the right model number for the city, and I would like, if there's a liaison that the mayor just said that I could contact, I would love to get that information and pursue that and find out what model they're using and what models are really available to eliminate that problem of glare and/or the contrast or the...
That's up to us. Yeah, that's on us, Jerry. We will reach out to them.
Okay, thank you.
We'll reach out to them.
I think that's a valid point as well. Before, all of a sudden, half the city is illuminated by the sun at night, that would... And I'm not, I...
It changes, I think, what really made the difference from going from a typical head to this new head. I mean, you notice, you look up, you automatically just look.
It was really noticeable.
It's a different type of head. The light is different.
And, you know, and I agree with Craig as well. I think as a city, we should be concerned about light pollution. I mean, it's a thing, it really is, so...
There are a number of different factors that I think we need to focus on here. I understand this discussion is being had surrounding safety, and I'm not dismissing that in any capacity, but you do really have to, you do really have to think about this and say that the aesthetics and the willingness to live somewhere, like, I wouldn't buy Joe's house. I wouldn't want to live there and deal with that. So the aesthetics of the matter, frankly, are just as important as the safety. So I do think we really need to be thoughtful about that. I was a bit concerned initially, and I appreciate... I, I was a bit concerned initially, and I appreciated your, your discussion, explanation on this, Mayor, but I'm, I'm very much looking forward to the, the Liberty Trail Park there. But the installation of these lights makes me concerned that the ambiance of what that park could be might be taken away by the distraction of these lights. Now, I understand where they're going, so it.
Right, it doesn't go to the park.
Correct, correct. But I, lighting can make or break a certain community, really. I mean, it gives a different feel, so.
Absolutely. I mean, you just take a walk around town in the evening, and you'll see the, the proliferation of new LED lighting, and most people don't even think about warm versus cool. And the cool, those cool LED lighting, their lights are, are, they're, I, I think they're awful, and it's noticeable. So you have to know what you're buying, and, so, all right. Any other questions concerning resolution number eighteen? Okay, with that, Cheryl, if you could call the roll.
Mrs. Hados?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Works?
Yes.
Chairman Morales?
Yes, five for, none against, resolution number eighteen is passed. And with that, that ends our agenda for this evening. I will open the floor up to council at this time. Yes, Richard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to thank the mayor, CLA, all the volunteers that were out Friday and Saturday doing the, the Day of Caring, the Earth Day plantings. I think it's really going to enhance things over at the new city hall, but I just wanted to say thank you to the, all the volunteers that were out on Saturday. It's very noticeable, the, the results of their hard work. I was a little disheartened, though, today, and I texted the mayor. I drove by the South Sixth Street Playground, and it was loaded with trash from the weekend. And knowing how hard these people worked to volunteer to clean up, it, it just, my heart sank when I saw all the trash. And I drove by tonight before I came into the meeting, and there was one person, young man out there with a garbage can picking things up, and I pulled over and I thanked him. But, you know, this, this South Sixth Street Playground should have trash cans or receptacles or recycling containers there. I, I just think it's such a nice basketball court, and that they're really using it, but i- if things continue like that, I say padlock it till they get the message that this, you know, needs to be kept in tip-top shape, no littering, put, put things in the proper receptacles. I learned at a young age in Boy Scouts, you left the place better looking than when you got there. And I hope this message gets out, that, you know, if, if they continue to desecrate and leave trash and garbage behind, it's going to, and with being locked up, thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I don't believe, Richard, the fence goes all the way around, either.
I don't know.
Unfortunately, yeah, I don't. It does not, chief? Or, doesn't, okay. I thought it was open.
No, I just don't want stuff ending up in the, in the hazel dino.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I appreciate your comment. I know I drove by, and it was, it was packed, it's being used heavily, which, that's what we want, you know, that's what we want, absolutely. So. Any other questions from council? Okay, Mayor, I don't know if you have anything?
I just want to also just extend on what Richard said about the United Way Day of Caring. There were almost five hundred volunteers in the county out doing projects, and I want to thank Donna and all the staff for helping. Almost all senior staff were involved in, you know, the Day of Caring, and it was great to see new faces in the downtown, helping with mulching. CLA had, thank you for what you do, and it was a great day, and just really appreciate everyone's efforts.
And that's been going, at, many years now. I don't know what it is, or how many years it's been going on, but.
This was the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, that's great. Okay, thank you, Mayor. This time, I'll open up the floor to anyone in attendance this evening, sir.
I just want to know, what's the status of the move downtown? Is this tonight the last meeting of Lebanon City Council in this building?
Yes, so this is the very last meeting of Lebanon City Council in the Lebanon County City Municipal Building. On Friday, we're going to be sending out a social media post and, and advertisement. Friday, and then all of next week, the city will be closed to the public. We will be answering the phones, and we'll be returning phone calls as soon as we're able. Email will be down for maybe a day or two, so we just ask for people to have patience. But we'll be officially moving the computers and servers over the weekend, and hopefully everything's up and running on Monday or Tuesday, but we'll be moving a lot of the smaller things in next week, and getting everyone set up, and making sure everything works properly. So we just thought it would be best if we weren't open to the public. This is a major, major operation. So we're excited, and we'll be making an announcement here in the next couple of days. I apologize, we just, there was so much going on personally, and with the police department issue, that we got a little bit behind in our celebration of this big monumental event. So we're probably tenuably looking at the twenty-third for our ribbon-cutting grand opening celebration. I just need to finalize all of the little details that will make up the big happy event, so. We're very excited. Everyone has been working so hard, all of the employees, and, you know, Melissa and Janelle and Robin, everyone, the chief, really putting a lot of time and effort, their own time, just making sure all of this runs smoothly. So I really appreciate everyone's efforts.
Have we gotten rid of all the old documents?
Gosh, I hope so. Well, Jamie already asked me, like, how soon are you having all your stuff out? I'm like, I have to the Fourth of July. I'll try to get out before that.
That's all.
And Jerry, I think you had a question?
Yeah, Jerry, I, I beg your indulgence, just for a few minutes, what I have to say, it won't take long. I live on Wyman Street, and I've noticed every Monday, I've got someone on the street who doesn't believe in moving their car to park, and it happens more often now than not. Unfortunately, the police don't, because of their schedule, I'm sure, can't get by in time, and the sweeper goes around them, cars don't get ticketed. That happened this morning. I would like to suggest to the city, in order to recover money that doesn't get covered quickly with the tickets, and to help cover some of the costs of the landfill, of the six hundred and some thousand pounds that the cities picked up last year, that you raise the parking ticket fine for street sweeping to fifty dollars. Make it hurt, make people aware that this is going to be an expensive thing if you continue to just shirk the responsibility. The next thing is, I wasn't aware that if someone was damaging a neighbor's property, I was not allowed to call up and, and report that. Is that the case here in the city?
That, that is not the case.
Oh, okay.
You can call and report.
So if I see something happening other than my property, I can call it in?
Sure can.
Thank you.
And we appreciate that.
And, and the last thing I have to ask.
Jerry, let me interrupt you there, though. Why are you, were you told that you can't report that, or?
I wasn't, but someone I know.
Okay.
So.
And you know who, circumstances, who told them that?
I believe this gentleman right there, and I think he was going to talk about that.
Okay.
My last item is, the mayor and I talked briefly this week while we were planting some trees by the new municipal building, about my question on solar panels last month at the last meeting. Mayor, has anything else come to light that you can share with the public or me now about that?
I, I didn't have time to look at anything today, Jerry, but Jerry and I did have a conversation, and I was remiss, so I'd like to take a quick moment to thank Jerry and Chuck Works for helping us on Earth Day, plant three trees at city hall, so thank you, Jerry, for.
Thank you, Jerry.
Jerry's also served long tenured on our Shade Tree Commission, as well as Chuck, so thank you for that. Jerry and I talked about, it was our, looking at the cost of electricity at city hall, our initial thought was, let's get some solar panels up there. We had reached out, Melissa had kind of Googled and was looking for companies, and we were having no luck at getting ahold of someone. She finally did find someone.
Janelle.
Janelle, I'm sorry, Janelle. I didn't mean to minimize your efforts.
No, I think I stopped.
And we, we had reached out to them, and they got a copy of our bills, they took a look at it, and it really wasn't much of a savings. Now, Jerry kind of gave me some information that I wanted to take a look at the proposal. It wasn't really even a proposal, the information that she had gotten to see what, if I could answer some of the questions or thoughts that Jerry had brought up. So it's not a done deal that we're not going to get them. I, thanks to Jerry, I want to look through and talk to him about maybe reaching out to another company that he's aware of. Because if we can save money or make money, you know, obviously, we want to do that.
And the roof isn't going anywhere, so it'll, it'll be there for use. And Jerry, going back to your, your idea with the increasing the, the street sweeper fines, I mean, I'd, I'd have to, I think we would have to look into that, Mayor. I didn't want to gloss over it. I can tell you, and I can't speak for council, but for myself, I'm, I'm not a strong advocate of, of almost making everyone pay for the few that aren't moving their vehicles, but maybe there's, maybe we could look at something that, that where we target those individuals. And again, I don't know that, something we would have to look at, Mayor. So.
Mr. Morales, the vehicle was parked out on my street this morning, had a previous parking ticket on the dashboard.
Okay, and, and.
And looked at it as a different date.
Yeah, I mean, those are the kind of people I think, you know, I could see increasing. Now, I don't know if there would be a mechanism to do that, it sounds like it would be labor-intensive, and, and I'm not trying to minimize what, you know, what you're saying, because I agree, I, you know, it doesn't get swept there, so, and they're just disregarding the fact that we're trying to, to clean the city, so. But I think we should consider it and, and get back to you on that.
Thanks.
Absolutely. Yes, Craig?
Isn't there something in the effect that a car shouldn't be parked in the same spot more than forty-eight hours, and, and the police could go out and park it, and every forty-eight hours, go out and give it another ticket, rather than increase existing?
That's correct, and that's typically complaint-driven, because we don't always typically know when a car has moved or not, so it's, again, typically neighbor-driven, that somebody says, hey, that car's been sitting here for, you know, three days, four days, and hasn't moved, so then we will proceed to chock the tires and watch it for forty-eight hours and put tickets on it for.
Because they're not parking lots, they're streets, and you've got to move your car every now and then. I, I ran.
And anyone else?
This is a question.
Alisher, if I could just get.
Yes, Alisher, I'll bring it up.
Thank you, sir.
Question that takes back a few months, was the fireman's employment contract resolved yet?
No.
Okay.
And do you have any update on that, Mayor? Or it's just in process, in progress?
In process.
Okay, all right.
One last thing. This, the green waste cleanup week is done, correct? Because I noticed one of my neighbors put a big pile of green waste out in the street jam.
Yeah, I saw that. Yeah, they'll get, they'll get a notice, they'll get a door hanger or some sort of a notice.
But it's not in front of anybody's house, so I don't. But if I know who did it, I can kindly, I'll talk to them first.
Okay.
Did you push it there?
No.
They could buy.
But I did have other piles around, but it's done, and people should not be doing that.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
And any other questions? Yes, sir.
Norman Tobias, and in regards to his statement about the, somebody damaging somebody else's property, the reason he mentioned it is because we had a situation yesterday where I didn't talk to the dispatcher, it's, it's actually my ex-wife talked to the dispatcher when I was there. There were children throwing a cat in at the one garage, at some of the garage doors at Jackson and North 14th Street, and she called it in, and the dispatcher asked if we or her were the property owners, and of course, we said no. Then he said, if we didn't be the property owners calling it in.
Okay, so, if I may.
No, I was going to say, I, I have a direct source to the, to look into that, that I can.
So that is a, unfortunately, sorry, it's a county employee, so we don't have direct control over them, but we can voice our concerns with the county employee that's in charge of that department, to ask if they could educate or consult with that employee to determine if that was really said, and, you know, have a conversation about it. But as the chief indicated, of course, you may call in if you see damage occurring on someone else's property. You would be a witness, possibly.
Right. To continue on with that, is what I'm trying to get at, the next question he asked was, are there cameras there? And then we said, no. Then he said, well, without cameras, he said, because there were some situations where there, where there were police coming to the area, the same area, that they don't think they're going to dispatch anybody because they don't catch anyone doing it. So my, my thing was, and in the, and it, I think it was last year, that, that they did, they actually did have a policeman that stayed in the area for some time because there was so much commotion in the, in the neighborhood. My question is, would it be feasible or possible to maybe have a street camera or something by the city? I know that as a homeowner, we're always asked, because I had a situation where I had graffiti just laid on the house just last week, and I was the first person to have a camera, and it's so hard even for me to keep upkeep on the house. It's, it would be nice to have cameras, but if the front porch is falling apart, to pay like four or five hundred dollars for a camera, it, it.
Yeah, so.
I'd like to do it, so my question was about if it would be feasible or possible to maybe have the city or somebody install a camera in one of the streetlights or something to maybe keep an eye on some of the, some of the problems.
So we would love to have cameras all over the city, but cameras are very expensive, and even more so to maintain and to store the, the information. So downtown Lebanon, Lebanon Foundation has eight cameras in the downtown, and just to install them initially was thirty-five thousand dollars for eight cameras. And then the ongoing costs are a couple thousand dollars a year, and if they need, that's just for service contracts, and then if there's any maintenance needed on them, it's even more. Lancaster City, which is where we went to look at these cameras initially several years ago, the Lancaster Safety Coalition, I believe the last time I had talked to them, their budget was like a half a million dollars for the cameras that are in Lancaster City. So again, while we would love to have them, where would we come up with that money? Which is why our police department, because so many people do have inexpensive cameras that can really shed a lot of great information and are very beneficial to the police department, and usually people are actually not proud, but happy to share. They're pleased to be able to share the information with the police department. While I understand, yes, there is an expense to that as well for a private citizen, of course, it's not a requirement, but anyone that does have a camera, it is and can be a help to the police department. But regarding the incident, I'm going to let the chief talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah, I really just have one question for you, Mr. Tobias. Do you remember the date and approximate time of that phone call?
No, not offhand.
Okay.
Might have been, to be honest with you, I'd have to look at my phone, and I left it in the car because I didn't think we were going to have it.
You were able to search by phone number, correct? So after the meeting, may you, would you please provide me with the phone number that was utilized to call into DES?
If I could dig it up, or whatever.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Because the, the reason why I'm asking is that way we can track back, listen to the phone conversation, and see where the, the ball was dropped, as they say, and prevented us from, from coming out to investigate that on our own.
Yeah, like I said, I didn't experience it, I was just kind of hearing things, so.
Okay, well, you're welcome to call me. I know we, we've spoken. I know we, we've spoken before, so you're very welcome to give me a call, leave me a message. If I don't answer, I'll call you back, or at least provide what information that I'm asking for tonight, that would be helpful, okay?
Okay, no, no, that's no problem.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
The other thing you could consider also is the, the new doorbell, the ring devices, they're, they're really inexpensive, and if you have internet at home, I don't have one, but from what I understand, there, you put that on the, and...
I do have Wi-Fi, but I do like, my phone is just an inexpensive phone.
Yeah.
And I, and I think you have, sort of have certain phones to get the app on and things, or...
Yeah.
Just for some of the issues come in.
Just a question for the curiosity of, of my own, and I'm not trying to, you know, create some sort of chaotic call-all for the city spending needless money, but I think we can all agree that the prevalence of cameras probably hinders some folks from engaging in criminal activity. It also helps the police solve crimes that may otherwise go unsolved. Are there any municipalities out there that do any sort of reimbursement, cost-sharing or anything like that with citizens to purchase cameras? Not for the service of it, but I don't know if that's a thing anywhere.
I don't know.
Some of these smaller ones are not expensive, so...
Yeah, the big thing is also, as the mayor alluded to earlier, is the storage, the data storage becomes an issue and costly.
If residents are storing it and maintaining it themselves, I'm just, just, just a concept that might, I mean...
Absolutely.
These ring doorbells are what, 50, 60, 70 bucks?
If that, yeah.
I don't know, just a thought. I don't wanna needless to spend money here, but...
There's about 11,000 units in the city, so if we were to give to one, we should almost give to all, so that's 11,000 times 50.
Sure, I understand, I understand. I'm not, I mean, everyone wouldn't want one for, trust me, just knocking on doors during a campaign. People don't want cameras, there are a lot of them that don't. But if, if it creates a situation in which maybe someone that wouldn't have the means to get one, that wants one could, and could help us, I don't know, it's just, just an idea.
I mean, we can see if we can reach out to...
Actually, it is...
Okay.
State Association.
Maybe we can ask if anyone does it.
Yeah, we can ask around.
There's a grant for it, you never know.
Absolutely. All right, any other questions? Okay, and as the mayor said, this will be our last meeting here. I, I asked Cheryl last week if she knew when the first meeting was here, and unfortunately, that information is in a box somewhere in transit to Cumberland Street, so... I think the building was built in 63, so, a few years, so... But with that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this last city council meeting on April 25th, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
This meeting is adjourned.